And it's really, we go into with the intention of specifically focusing on some parts and pieces, but it's largely a two-way conversation with the businesses in the room. And trying to identify on a day-to-day basis what are their needs. And we understand from a technical delivery what is needed to be a successful business. But they have different needs and they all have unique scenarios. So we try to listen and craft the coursework, if you will, around specific scenarios that they may have. And the goal is, is that they can take this information on to other projects, not just for OPS, but as a business they can apply, oh, I learned how to do this, take off there. The other thing I'll say is, we don't just end at the academy. Galitha and myself, on a day-to-day basis, interact with small businesses that have attended and have not attended, and just have questions about, this doesn't sound right, what do you think? Or who should I go to and maybe talk about this or talk about that? So, we try to provide that day-to-day guidance, if you will. And then we also, on Tuesday, had a refresher. So the folks that did go through the academy went out and had some projects worked, some was for the district, some were for other entities, and then we brought them back and said, okay, what were you able to apply? What do we need to still work on? And, you know, do you need to attend the next session to focus in on that more? Or is there something else that we need to try to connect them with? Is it a workforce development component? Is it some different type of technical assistance? And then the other piece that we've really brought in is, we have a certified OSHA trainer come in, comes in monthly and provides OSHA 10 hours. So anyone in the construction business knows that's a pretty standard certification that is really nice to have from a business credibility perspective. So, that's something that we're also offering, and several small businesses attended that. A month ago, don't have any in this month's session, but next month we'll continue to offer it. And again, it's really trying to provide a different array of things that they can access, and then they make the choice of, I need this skill, you know, I want to attend.
So is the academy all just Jacobs folks? Because it sounded like maybe one of the concerns was that there's not enough background knowledge about who's coming in and doing the academy and what kinds of credentials or issues they may already have, the street smarts that Preston referred to. So are you, are you taking advantage of community partners to help you?
So the initial, the initial course was just the Jacobs folks, because it was our opportunity to try to learn on how to best deliver. But since then, we have been talking with several other contractors in the community about certain skill sets that they can help bring to the table with some of their experiences with small businesses. So we, I don't know that it's the street smarts that was referenced, but we are trying to, you know, divide the course teachers, if you will, through different businesses and try to access more partners to come in, whether that's a conversation on finance, that's more about business finance, or credit remediation, thank you, or bondability and all these other parts and pieces. We are trying to grow, again, it's, there's some logistics to the space that we're in and the number of folks in the timeline, but as we continue to identify the needs, we're very willing to shift that breaking and say, let's pull this in and do an extra class on, you know, insurance. And who are the insurance providers, maybe? And what are the conversations you need to make sure? And what should your workman's comp agent be doing for you? That you're, so we are trying to broaden that as we go.
Sure. It just seems to me there's opportunities to build bridges and it's too, it's obviously sensitive and kind of volatile subject, and so I just want to make sure that we're being as, that our inclusion program is as inclusive as possible of the community and the people to whom this is really important, so.
And one of the things that I wanted to add in the comment that was made for the work that was let after the class for PANKA, those were competitive bids, they were not handouts. And so in each category where there was a breakdown of the classification of trade of work, there were three competitive bids in each area. So, I don't want you all to believe that we just handed out agreements after the class and that those contractors went to work at PANKA. They went to work at PANKA because there was a swing space that portables had to be placed. We thought that was a great takeoff to allow for some of the small disadvantaged businesses to participate, but it was a competitive bid in each category.
Ms. Williams.
So my question is also around the economic inclusion piece. And so I just want to make sure I know that our new EI director, I'm not sure what his, the formal, yes, what the formal title is, will be starting later this month, the 21st. And so I just wanted to see what, especially you, Ms. Gillespie, of what, what is your transition plan or what have you kind of wrapped your head around? I know that we had touched base before briefly about kind of what your timeline looked like. And fortunately, or unfortunately, however it goes, we had to go around to, to find the person that we have offered the position to. So do you have an idea of what that looks like right now?
I am actually going to be here through 2017.
Okay. Very different than what we had talked about. So, and that was kind of my concern, was how quick you're leaving and really getting our new director really prepared to do this, not just for bond work, but just across all of the work that we're doing. So, that was one of my questions, and I'm having a moment, I'll come back with my second one.
Mr. Scanlon.
I just wanted to say that, especially for Beveridge Middle School, you guys did a information presentation for, during the school open house. Got a lot of positive feedback from that, from parents that just were happy to know what's going on, where it is and the stages of progress. So I would encourage when you have the opportunity to present at school open houses or other school functions where there should be a large parental turnout, I think that's a good idea to focus in on that. And then the other question is, we talked about the economic inclusion, can you just remind everybody who's paying for that and where those funds are coming from? As far as part of your contract?
Yeah, it's, everything that we're talking about this evening is within our fixed fee agreement. So it's no additional cost to the district or the taxpayers or the bond program or any of those parts and pieces. Again, I think, and one of the things that we've talked about, again, is having Galitha here through all the procurement, which is in 2017, which is a significant time commitment for her. Of course, she doesn't live here, so she's moving around a lot, which is greatly appreciated for me and the rest of our team. And I think our folks have really hit some good stride, too, with the concepts and the strategies and a lot of the technical work it does take to make this as successful as it's been. Again, there's a lot of different moving parts to a complete package, and that's what we're really striving for. And I think, you know, letting the process work, and we've had this conversation in other areas of the bond program, but, you know, I hope everyone knows that we really do have the small businesses, their success and mine is number one, not only with work with the district, but well beyond that. And that's really what the program's poised to provide. It's not a one-stop, one-shot, that's it, let's move on. It's really for long-term growth of these businesses.
Okay. I've got one question for Ms. Williams, and then I think Dr. Turnquist wants to make a comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Mr. Snow. Okay.
So my other question, just looking at the, kind of the momentum of the Tier One and Tier Two groups, Mr. Summers, you just said you had 20 for the next academy class. I guess I really wanted to ask, are you finding, even out in the community? Because I understand that Preston talked about the street smarts, but I have to give you credit for actually going out to unfamiliar streets and really pounding the pavement and really bringing that. Do you still see that momentum growing? And, I mean, is there any insight that you can give us about that? Because I understand where the frustration is. I mean, I live in North Omaha, I'm there, I see, but I also see some of the other works. So do you see momentum? Do you see, are there hindrances that you see? What information I think that we should know about kind of your role in the economic inclusion piece?
Well, I would like to say that, starting here in Omaha and doing the background and assessment, one of the things that we learned pretty quickly was that there was no best practice for economic inclusion. And so what you have is a grassroots initiative where you're establishing practices and you're actually seeing that not only the small emerging businesses are growing, but the owners are growing and embracing it. We have more owners now that are talking inclusion. The city is actually growing their program. When we first started here, I think there were only 130 companies that were certified as Tier One and Tier Two. Now the list is over about 240. And so in six months, it has grown tremendously. We are continuing to encourage small companies, emerging businesses to get certified, because that's the only way that we're going to work with them and count. And we're seeing that list grow by leaps and bounds. One of the things that you should know is that our emphasis is still Omaha-first. And so even though a company could come in from out of state and register and become a Tier Two, you will see that most of the work that we're doing, we're doing it with Tier One companies that are within the census tract where there's serious disparity. So we're very proud of that. I think that the city is embracing even their list, too, because we're pushing more business types into the Tier One and Tier Two. So we see it as a growing initiative. We've had a lot of calls from North Omaha, South Omaha, in reference to the academy. Out of the 20, we have five Latina companies. And it was said that, you know, Latina companies were not going to come and be a part of it because of the language barrier. We graduated one, and now we have five that are going to be there. And we're very proud of that, and we hope that that number continues to grow.
Well, and it's, I just, it's kind of evident that there's always going to be positive and negative to every issue and every challenge. And, you know, it's nice to see some of those. Mr. Santos came up, and that for me was kind of a heart warmer, like, wow, you came and now you're, you're doing your diligence to reach back and bring other people up, too. And so that for me is, it's amazing. But I really just wanted to get some of those additional insights that weren't really in here. So, thank you.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the short, six-slide presentation. Earlier today, we heard from public comment that a REACH program was involved, and you guys mentioned earlier that you're working with a REACH program. So obviously, this might be directed towards Dr. Turnquist and Mr. Evans. Obviously, our district and entities' REACH program is operating, but they, I don't really know what the REACH program is, and I probably assume that most board members don't know what it is. And I was wanting to know, when do we ever get a presentation about that program?
Dr. Turnquist, can you do that?
We will have that presentation for you at the next board meeting on REACH. But I want to also go back to something Mrs. Fay said, because I think that's very important, the use of the concept of collaboration. We're not only being inclusive in terms of small contractors, but we want to be fully inclusive of all partners in the area, whether that has to do with an entity such as Davis Companies, which can provide wonderful services, or the REACH program, anything. Our objective is to work together collaboratively to help the contractors who need help. That's our primary purpose, and we're not going to leave anybody out of that process. And we will have that presentation for you on the REACH program on the 21st.
Oh, Mr. Wayne.
Just to follow up to Mr. Snow with the public comment, I guess I just want to, oops, get Jacobs and staff to state publicly that clearly we're not putting individual contractors or companies out there who have been federally barred and banned and barred from the city. That's a true statement, right? We're not doing that, right?
So the bidding practices and awards that were done on the contractors that identified follow the current district protocol?
That's not a comforting answer. So let's talk about the bidding process, though. I was just hoping I'd get one simple, no, but anyway. You said competitive bid. Was that competitive bid for PANKA open to the entire public or just those who attended the class?
So on the capital improvement project, the overall project, the 3.3, it's publicly bid?
After 3.3, the swing space, yeah.
On the portables component, it was competitively quoted with a sourced contracting pool. So it was open beyond the academy, but it was focused on Tier One and Tier Two. So it was beyond the academy.
So, so what vetting process are we using beyond just that? I mean, if...
So let me, so the inclusion plan, there are going to be challenges in the field, there are going to be challenges in the office. That's the intention of the program. But just like Dr. Turnquist said, the idea is to identify partners that want to help those individuals be successful. And it's, they all have different needs, whether it's in the field and understanding what a request for information is, or how do I write up a change order? We've created a standard invoice so everybody can utilize that, because that was a gap that was identified. You know, it's, the process, if we're going to be truly, you know, fully inclusive or as much as we can, we are going to have opportunities to help contractors truly improve and grow. We don't have a group of five or seven that we feel is capable, and that's all we're focusing on. We're really focusing on everyone that's certified and then trying to identify where they're at on the path with the opportunities that we have.
And I would like to say that we use the Tier One and the Tier Two list, and we communicated the opportunities to those that were certified Tier One and Tier Two, in the categories in which we were sourcing. And so if it was electrical work, we went through the whole entire list of all the Tier One and Tier Two that are certified as electricians, and we provided the information to them. There was plumbing work, we did the same thing. So that's how we actually allowed for other contractors to participate.
So let me, let me frame this in a historical context. When affirmative action programs came out, and this is, I think, the angst that we're feeling. When affirmative action programs came out, oftentimes contractors would put out people who weren't qualified or who could not perform the work to say, see, this is why we can't do it. And so I think that's the negativity or the angst that people are feeling. And I say that to say, if we do another project where we're just focusing on Tier One, Tier Two, truly trying to get like a pilot project, a star project, I go back to the Jackie Robinson story. You know, you have to have the person that can, that can handle all the things that come with it. Because unlike everybody else, oftentimes when a minority speaks or a minority performs in a starlight, you are performing for the rest of your people, whether you want to or not. And we can't afford any more mishaps. So if we're going to do that, we need to add some additional references, calling people. We need to make sure that we don't put that star project out there showing that we can do it without vetting everything. I think if, maybe we would have done that, we might not be having some of the comments and what's going on right now. But I'm really concerned that my questioning didn't stop at the first question.
Ms. Williams.
So I do want to follow up on Mr. Wayne's question, but I want to present it differently. So, if said person is banned and barred federally from the city, they cannot obtain certification? Yes, no? I'm asking, does anybody know?
You're saying the Tier One or Tier Two certification?
Yes.
I'm not sure of that.
So if staff could get that, because that makes a difference for me. I mean, I understand that it sounds good, and when you're trying to make a point across, but I think it's, it behooves us to not have that answer. So, to answer your question, that's information that I would like for staff to get to us.
I can answer that for you. I can answer that for you.
Well, and I get that...
As both of my companies are Tier Ones, Tier One satisfaction, Tier One certification does not equate to quality of work or history. It is just a certification saying you live in a geographical area or your company is owned by a certain number of people who work for your company or owned in a geographical area. There's no qualifications whatsoever.
But that wasn't my question. My question is, can we find out, our staff, can we find out if they're certif, I mean, if they're banned and barred?
We do have a relationship with the individual that has certification.
I mean, that's a question that I think we should know. If it's put out there, then I want some clarification, and that's all I'm asking staff to do. So if you could get that and email that to the board within the next two to three days, that would be fantastic.
Okay. Okay, that sounds very good. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for providing us with so much information. Okay, my next, I have a question on J1E, facilities capital planning. How long is that presentation? We still have quite a bit to cover. 10 minutes? All right, so we're go, how about if we give you seven? So, I guess at this time, would anyone want to make a motion to table, or not table, to postpone it to a date certain, which would be next meeting?
I'd like to postpone it until our next board meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone J1E facilities capital planning to the next board meeting. Is there a second? No. Second? Oh, who said, oh, Mrs. Fay, second. Thank you. Yikes, I've got discussion, hearing done. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion carries. Let's move on to action items. J2A, approval of Douglas County School District, 0001, the 2015-16 budget. I think we've all had a chance probably to look at the budget presentation. We'll let Mrs. Kenoki go through it.
Yeah.
And if we have questions, let's gather those up for the end.
President Gadding, Vice President Williams, and board members, I'd like to present to you the 2015-16 budget for the Omaha Public Schools. The first proposal is for the non, the funds that don't require a tax levy. That would be the lunch fund for $43.7 million, activities fund, the central stores, depreciation, employee benefit, student fees, the contingency, and the cooperative fund. And then we would begin on, on the 15-16 budget. And the one thing that, to remind you when we're looking at the budget, is that we budget on a cash basis, but we audit on an accrual basis. So there's different terms that we use for the budgeting process and for the accrual process. So we've included in your handout a glossary of budget terms, just to make it a little bit easier to try to understand what all these do. To start with the budget this year, we need to look at what happened last year. And one of the things from last year's budget is that we were going to use approximately $21 million from the cash reserve for the current year's budget. And so one of the first things I did when I came was to reduce the discretionary fund for the buildings. We took back about $6 to $7 million from the buildings and discretionary funds, because we knew we didn't want to use all of that cash balance in one year. We needed to make sure we had a cash balance as we moved forward. So we did work with the principals in the buildings, and they were all very helpful and understanding, and I've really appreciated working with them and their understanding as we moved forward. So, talking about the cash basis, one of the questions we had was, what is the cash flow for the, for the cash basis of accounting? And so for 14-15, we're projecting expenditures to be about $520 million, and we're projecting our income to be about $517 million. So, right now, we're projecting our net loss. We still have journal entries to make and payables to reconcile and all of that. But right now, for our cash balance, we're projecting a loss of about $1 to $3 million. And what that means is our cash balance will be, will be lower than what it was at the beginning of the year because of the things that we did with the budget. So we're projecting it'll be about $1 to $3 million reduction in our cash balance. What we did with the, with the buildings is we reduced our discretionary funding last year, because that's where most of the $21 million from the cash on hand was going to go to. And then we also applied indirect costs to the lunch fund to get some revenue into the general fund to help it move along for the rest of the year. So, I think we're doing pretty good to get $1 to $3 million reduction in our cash balance, considering some of the challenges that we had. So in our development process, we used a formula to develop the staffing allocation for the buildings, and then we also had staffing conferences with the principals, and we worked with the EDs and the budget office, the human resources office, and the buildings, and we developed budgets. This is a bit different process than what they were used to, and some, some buildings felt that they really didn't understand what was happening when they had their staffing conferences. But we, what we did is we staffed what they had in the building from the year before. And then we also staffed for needs that they had because of student increases or special needs that they had. We also incorporated that. And we changed how we did discretionary funding, because in the past, what the buildings would do is buy staff with their discretionary funds, and we actually provided that staff when we did the budgeting this year. So, that was a little bit of change. We're going to be revising that process and making it better, but that's how we approached the budget this year when we developed it. So for the 15-16 budget, what we're projecting is a general fund levy of approximately $1.23. Last year, it was $1.19 overall general fund levy, and learning community levy. So it's about a three cent increase, and most of that increase is due to the bond fund, because now we're paying interest on the bonds that were issued. So our valuation had increased this year by approximately 3 percent, and last year it was like 1.2 percent. It was a very low increase. So this year, we had more of an increase in the OPS valuation, and then overall for the learning community, there was an increase in the valuation. So that helped us with our expenditures. And you can see in this slide, number five, what we're doing is, we're not using the cash on hand. We're using what we can get in revenues and balancing the budget that way. So, moving on, when we did the budget, we looked at investments for instructional materials in the adoption cycle, and then we also looked at technology. We have increased investments in instructional materials. We're looking at different categories like the ag, food and natural resources, high school business and personnel finance, and on down the line for textbook adoption. And overall, there's going to be a $4 million increase for textbook adoption for 15-16. And it's, again, for high school business and finance, secondary reading, elementary writing, agricultural, food and natural resources, human growth, development, music, and social studies. All of this curriculum still has yet to be approved by the board, but that's what we're budgeting for 15-16. In addition to help make everything balance in the budget, we're transferring 30 teacher FTEs to Title II-A for class size reduction, and that helps us in the general fund as we try to make it through without dipping into our cash balance. So, we also have increased investments in the expenditures for technology. We have estimated or budgeted for a $2 million increase for a PeopleSoft upgrade, and then a $1 million increase for software equipment and training. And we're going to use the ESU funding for the technology upgrades and some money from the depreciation fund to pay for that. So, we're not using general funds to pay for that, but we're making sure we budget for these expenditures. So overall, our general fund budget of expenditures over time has... So overall, our general fund budget of expenditures over time has, last year, we had a really big increase. It was 10.73% increase in our budget of expenditures. This year, we're back down to 3.94%. Most of that increase is due to salary increases. We had an overall 4% increase in salaries across the district. So then, once we've developed these parameters, then we tied it to the mission and goals of the district, to the strategic plan. And I broke out for each of the categories, we have guiding principles for the district, and I broke out the budget to match each of the guiding principles. And we talked about this in the work session, that it's really hard to identify specific costs to put with each guiding principle. But overall, I tried to separate that out for the budget. So for safe, healthy, and engaged students, and risk and safety management, we budgeted $542,000. For student safety, it was 400 and, about $500,000. Transportation has gone up. It's about $43 million now that we spend on transportation. Health services, $353,000. Guidance and counseling, and physical education. All of this was for the guiding principle for safe, healthy, and engaged students. Then for high expectations for rigorous curriculum and effective instruction, we have Elementary Education Administration, about $7 million. Secondary Education Administration, $11 million. And we have Curriculum and Learning Administration, reading resources, art and music, military and science tactics, and special education. So all of those costs were fit under this guiding principle for high expectations, rigorous curriculum, and effective instruction. Then for the guiding principle for committed, diverse, effective teachers, administration, and staff. For elementary instruction and operations, we budgeted approximately $207 million. Middle school instruction, $79 million. High school instruction, $100 million. Then we have alternative programs and school support. For equitable and efficient systems and resources, for business services, it's about $10 million. Operations and maintenance, $22 million. Contingency, $17.6 million. Technology, and then early leave incentive. For engaged and empowered parents and family, for the Office of Equity and Diversity, we have budgeted $206,598. Integrated learning programs, $3.1 million. English as a second language, $1.8 million. Then for involved and supportive community partners, we had the Economic Conclusion Plan budgeted for about $210,000. Government Relations, $80,000. And then for accessible, transparent, and two-way communication, we have $615,000 budgeted for communications, $1.2 million for student information systems, and $2.5 million for So we tied all of our expenditures to the strategic plan and tried to categorize what those were applied to. And then we worked within our budget development timeline. And today, we're hoping that you adopt the budget for 15-16, and we have to file the budget with the Auditor of Public Accounts, the Douglas County Clerk, Sarpy County Clerk, Department of Education, and the Learning Community by September 20th. So I talked about the cash basis and the accrual basis of accounting. Now we have, this is, has to do with the accrual basis, and it's the unrestricted fund balance. And what the unrestricted fund balance is, it's the amount that's not assigned to anything in the general fund for future costs or current costs. And we're required to have a general fund balance maintained at a level between 5% and 15%. And the purpose of the unassigned balance is to help with cash flow, maintain investments on investment grade bond ratings, and offset revenue shortfalls. So with all the changes that we made last year and what we're proposing to do this year, we're projecting our unrestricted fund balance to be about 10% this year. So it dipped slightly. We're hoping to build that back up again next year, but given some of the circumstances, this is how we're gonna, this is how we think it's going to turn out yet this year. So for the, we have the expenditures budgeted, and now we're estimating what our revenues are going to be for the general fund. We have the general fund property tax, less exclusions. So we're limited to 10 cents for the general fund tax request for the OPS valuation. And then we have the Learning Community Common Levy, which is 95 cents on the Learning Community valuation. Our state aid was $213 million, and it had increased from last year to this year. We also have special education funding, other state sources, local sources, county, miscellaneous, and federal. So our total estimated revenue is $557 million. So to see how that plays out in the resources to support operations, you can see what was budgeted for 14-15 and what we had budgeted for 15-16, and the differences in those categories. Most of what our expenditures are as a school district are on salaries and benefits. We spend about 85%, 80 to 85% of our expenditures have to do with salaries and benefits going to staff. So for the property taxes, they've increased, what we budgeted for property taxes increased by about 4%. State aid increased by about 14%. Other state sources had increased by 11%. And then our federal sources or fund balances had increased also. So for our budget development parameters for 15-16, I mentioned earlier that we had district negotiated contract salaries of approximately 4% district-wide. The valuation on the Learning Community increased by 4.5%, which was very helpful for us this year as we're budgeting. The valuation for OPS increased by 3%. And we set the levy for the Learning Community at 95 cents and our OPS levy at 10 cents. So we were maximized at all of our levy capacity. So again, as we talk about what the increases have been over time and our budget of expenditures, for 15-16, we're proposing a 3.94% increase. And again, most of that was due to the salary increases that we had. So our budget of expenditures from 14-15 were $536 million. With the increases that we had, it makes our preliminary or proposed budget for 15-16 $557 million. So then, as a comparison of what it's doing for our tax rate, for our tax levy funds, the general fund went up by .01 cents. The bond fund went up by the 3 cents. And then the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund actually went down slightly. So overall, our levy last year was $1.19832, and then this year, it's going to be $1.22975. So it's about a 3 cent increase in our overall levy, which includes the bond fund that we have to begin paying the interests on. So that's what I have for the general fund budget presentation and the tax levy funds, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And Mrs. Faye.
This, it's a very good presentation, so thank you. And I appreciate you making the additions that we talked about with Mr. Snow and Mrs. Gadding at our committee meeting last week. And I really like slide, and I thank you for numbering the slides. You're welcome. That was a very good suggestion. It makes it much easier in conversation. So like slide 22, where you have the pie chart and you break it down. I would like to see percentages. It's not a high priority and not something you need to do right away, but it'd be interesting just to take like slide 11 and, rather than just the numbers, to break that down in percentages so we can see
Sure.
what percentage of the budget is going to each of those. And I understand that those are loose and that you try, I mean, I totally get that, but I would think that'd be, then you could clearly see, oh, here's, you know, a big chunk of this pie is going to this, and we've identified it as a priority and
Okay. I'd be happy to do that, and I can give that to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
I want to thank you as well. And I think in other districts, normally, the Budget Committee meets prior to the budget getting set. But I would suggest to the Board and to the Budget Committee that we continue to meet, partly because you're new in your role and you're bringing lots of great information to us. And I think we're learning a lot as well. And the changes that are being made, it's helpful for us to understand those and be able to communicate those to the full Board so that as staff experiences the changes that are happening and the way that budgeting is being done. And as you said, you're going to refine the process
Yes.
through this next year. You were, I mean, you had a very short timeframe to work on from when you started to now. So I guess that would be my suggestion to the Board, that we just really continue to hone this process. And this is, this is a very good presentation and certainly more robust than what we've seen in the past, so I want to thank you for that. Mr. Vargas.
One thing I also wanted to mention is, Open Book is on our website, that you could look at what the budget is for each of the buildings now, if you wanted to review that as well.
Thank you. And just to make sure everybody understands, whether it's public or at the board table, I think that's where you hover over the school, and then you click on the school. That's really on the map. So if you go to the map section and not the first section, it's, I think, the second circle. And I know I send people there as well. So it's very helpful if people have questions about schools, and more than just the budget. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Gadding. So thank you. I know that one of the big pushes I asked for was to try to, and we all, we all did, and I was asking for a little bit more of the details, and I appreciate you doing that on a short timeline. And in particular, also, given the short timeline, you've been with us. I think it's a step in the right direction. And I think to your response, like, there's some that you didn't know how detailed you can get, partly because you didn't know enough information yet.
Right.
I want to make sure that when we're planning for next year, that we're getting more detailed in regard to the programmatic changes and staff FTEs that are within each of these to ensure increased clarity and tying it as much as possible to sort of the report card goals from our strategic plan.
Yes.
That would be fantastic. I am still, I'm still concerned about the amount of funding, and I expressed this in our meeting, that we're allocating to the Office of Equity and Diversity, given our strategic plan and what had been identified around addressing some concerns that our consultants had brought up around equity and diversity in the district, and $200,000 whatever amount seems low. And I looked at, and I know we work with Minneapolis Public Schools or program with them. Minneapolis Public Schools, even though it has 30,000 students or so, spends, this year is allocated about $800,000 to the Office of Equity and Diversity. And actually tell us how much they're spending for staff, how much they're spending for programs, and what those programs are in very discreet detail. And I think that because we obviously don't have the Equity and Diversity telling us what they need in a dollar amount for next year, you wouldn't put that in here. But for next year, I would want to see more concretely how we're improving in the areas that we delineated in the strategic plan. Office of Equity and Diversity being a very large one, and our community engagement being another one. I know we, that's something we should expand on because it's something we put in our strategic plan, and it seems like a huge priority.
Yes, I agree.
And then, one more question, just around, and no, we talked about, then this, it's not delineated here specifically, but around the magnet funding. I know we've had this, I've had these, I've had conversations with South High Parents and Principal Kano, and it's come to my attention that we need to address the inequity with our magnet funding formula. Because as it stands, not doing that will make sure that it's not equitable across all schools, that we have a baseline, it's not based on per spending, per magnet student, that there's actually, even though some schools have 100,000, sorry, 1,000 students less, they're getting pretty similar to near the same funding as South High, which has a tremendous number of students, 24, 2,500 students. And that this is based on a formula, the Magnet Core Foundation Allocation Formula.
Right.
And so I would like to do and implore the Board is that we bring this to our Specialty School Reviews Committee and with the Budget Office to identify a way to do this equitably based off of the number of magnet students in each school, so that we're appropriating the right amount of funding for staff and for, you know, programs for each of the schools based on this, per student, per pupil expenditure.
Yeah, that's one of the areas that we plan to look at when we're revising the process this coming year.
Okay. And I would love for the SS, I'm always forgetting, it was a special, right?
Just call it the scissor. Actually, that's, we would like you to come and join us so we can have some more vetted conversation, I think.
Yeah. And now, I know that Houston ISD Independent School District revamped with the Board their funding formula for magnet programs with a committee to ensure that it is equitable and
Great.
different per pupil funding for the different grade levels and the different kinds of magnet programs, given, let's say, for the arts, requires more funding than, let's, some other types of magnet programs, given some of the things that go along with that. So I would, I want to make sure that that's something that we address in the next year and work with this committee.
I think that's great. So thank you very much for that, and I do think there's a lot to that process. It can't just be changed overnight because
Yeah.
sometimes a magnet program just costs X, no matter how many people are participating, and yet sometimes there are more costs when there's more students. So I think that's good for that committee to look at. Ms. Williams, and then Mr. Evans has a comment.
I just think that, Mr. Vargas hit the nail on the head for me with, especially the magnet and the funding. So I just wanted to look at Mr. Ray, and if you would please make sure that Mrs. Kenoki is, gets those invites to the SSRR committee meetings, because I think she will bring some very fruitful dialogue that we lack, just because we don't have the budget conversation while we're having that.
Okay.
Very good. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Gadding. Just as a point of reference, we'll have a presentation, we have a staff member that's out right now, but we're going to have one in the very near future that talks about a lot of the Equity and Diversity pieces. Sharif will be a part of that conversation. One of the things that's different with us than Minneapolis, and I kind of make it an analogous to our EDs. Our EDs just have one person and a support person, that's it. But they have access to lots of resources. And that's kind of the same with the Office of Equity. We have, whether it's Minnesota Humanities, whether it's Curriculum Instruction Staff, whether it's Special Education Staff, we meet on a weekly basis, and that office sits at the table with all the leadership. And so if we combined all of those resources together that are being applied, it would be a lot different number, and kind of the same with the EDs. If we talk about the EDs and just talk about that one person, it doesn't look like, gosh, you're really not doing much to support the development of your principals. You put one person there. Well, not really, because that one person sits at the table with Dr. Turnquist, Ms. Kenoki, Dr. Kerberg. And so the resources, then, what we try to do is combine them and then align them to the strategic plan. So it's a little different formatting and just how you format your budget for your particular organization. And Minnesota's just organized a little differently. So hopefully, that'll come out a little more with more clarity when the presentation happens. I think that's going to be, hopefully, in the next, we were ready to do it this time, but I think we had a staff person couldn't attend, but hopefully, next board meeting. So that might help with that.
Mr. Vargas.
No, that's helpful. But for me, it slows and addresses the concerns that we are doubling down on some, on something that is a tricky conversation and a tricky skill development for across our teachers and staff, which Equity and Diversity is. If we have one person that shoulders a significant load of being a representative of the Office of Equity and Diversity, that's a large load. When, I remember when Mr. Lawaroo came into the presentation and told me all his priorities and the things he's doing, it almost seemed impossible and that he was like a Superman. And the fact that the budget, the $200,000, pales in comparison to other Office of Equity Diversities across the country. pales in comparison to other Office of Equity Diversities across the country, while I understand it's infused within the roles of our Executive Directors and many other avenues of Curriculum Instruction, Teacher and Development, you know, School Support, Community Services are enrolled in that Executive Director, there's an added, the significant added benefit when we build the capacity of a program, of a department to do the, to do something very, very specific and in this instance, it's building the way that we're approaching Equity Diversity in all of our programming, in our teacher development, in the way that we communicate, in the way that we work with parents, in the way that we, in every single way, shape or form, and I think that identifying, having a conversation with our, with Office of Equity and Diversity and looking at other districts and other states and how they use this is going to be important when we reevaluate the key priorities for our strategic plan next year.
Perfect, okay. If there are no other comments, Ms. Williams.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2015-2016 Douglas County School District 0001 budgets which do not require a tax levy which include the following: School Lunch, $43,701,133; School Activities, $6,500,000; Central Stores, $6,500,000; Depreciation, $5,000,000; Employee Benefits, $10,666,000; Student Fees, $800,000; Contingency, $10,100,000; Cooperative, $56,391,645; And Prior Service Retirement, $149,432.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion by Ms. Williams and second by Ms. America for the adoption of the resolution for the 2015-16 Douglas County School District 001 budgets which do not require a tax levy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries, moving on to J2B, Approval of the Douglas County School District 001, 2015-2016 budgets which require a tax levy excluding General Fund. Mrs. Kanoki.
As I mentioned earlier, the budget for 15-16 for the general, or for all the other funds except the General Fund, I guess that's what we're working on now, right? Okay, so the tax asking for the Bond Fund is 13,5749 cents, we're asking for the Qualified Capital Purpose Fund for .021995 and then those are our, and then the Special Building Fund, we are not asking for taxes, so it's just the Bond Fund and the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund that we're requesting a levy for. And the budget for the Bond is 67.6 million, the budget for the Building Fund is 171.6 million and the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund is 6.1 million.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Kanoki on that? Hearing none, Ms. Williams.
All right, I hope I don't mess this one up. I move, I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2015-2016 Douglas County School District 0001 budgets which require, which require a tax levy excluding the General Fund as follows: Bond Funds, $67,619,248; Special Building Fund, $171,561,000; Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Funds, $6,133,922.
Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Williams and second by Mr. Snow to adopt the resolution before us to approve the 2015-2016 Douglas County School District 001 budgets which we do require a tax levy excluding the General Fund. Is there any conversation, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries, next we will move to J2C, Approval of the 2015-2016 General Fund Budget, Douglas County School District 001.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, our total tax asking for the learning community and the school district itself is $1.22975 which is a three cent increase over what we had last year and that is due to the interest that we're paying on the Bond Fund. Our valuation this year increased by 3.02% for the Lincoln Public Schools and for the Learning Community increased by 4.5%. Our levy for the Learning Community is 95 cents and our levy for the OPS budget, less exclusions, is 10 cents, so our overall increase in expenditures is 3.94%.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Kanoki? Hearing none, J2C.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2015-2016 Douglas County School District 001 General Fund Local Budget in the amount of $557,287,399 and a reimbursable grant budget in the amount of $81,393,577 for a total General Fund Budget of $638,680,976.
Is there a second? Okay, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Snow to adopt the resolution to approve the 2015-2016 Douglas County School District 001 General Fund Local Budget in the amount of $557,287,399 and a reimbursable grant budget in the amount of $81,393,577 for a total General Fund Budget of $638,680,976. Is there any additional conversation or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries, moving on to J2D, Approval of the 2015-2016 Budget Educational Service Unit Number 19.
The budget for ESU 19 meets the total levy limit of $1.05 per $100 of assessed valuation. It includes funds received from OPS to support the district's technology and printing operations. It includes funding for expanded supplemental education services and it will use 2.5 million from the cash balance for the PeopleSoft upgrade that we talked about earlier in the General Fund Budget. Overall, the levy is a dollar, dollar five cent, or 1.5 cents for the ESU 19 and the valuation has a 3% increase similar to what the district's state, district-wide valuation is and I ask that you adopt this budget.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Kanoki? Hearing none.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2014-2015 ESU, 15, it's written wrong, see I was just following protocol, I move to adopt the resolution before you to adopt the 2015, 2015-2016 ESU Number 19 Budget of $23,550,294.
Is there a second? Second, so motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mrs. Fay to adopt the resolution to approve the 2015-2016 ESU Number 19 Budget of $23,550,294. Is there any conversation or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow. Eight aye.
Motion carries, moving on to J2E, Proposed Property Acquisition at 156th and Ida Streets.
Thank you, Mrs. Gauding. Staff recommends that the Board of Education authorize the calling of a public hearing pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute Section 79-1096 and 25-2504 regarding the school district's proposed acquisition of property located on the northwest corner of 156th and Ida Streets. The staff recommends acquisition of all or part of the following generally described parcels. Is it all right if I just read the address and the approximate size? Okay. 15802 Ida, approximately 10.26 acres, 15850 Ida, approximately 11.4 acres, 6904 North 156th, approximately 1.43 acres, Lot 2 Sugar's Place, approximately 8.01 acres, 7002 North 156th, approximately 4.91 acres, 7150 North 156th, approximately 12.97 acres, 73, excuse me, 7350 North 156th, approximately 10.5 acres. Staff shall further be authorized to set the date, time and location for such hearing and shall give all notices as are required by law. Staff shall not be authorized to file any petition allowed under Nebraska Revised Statute Section 76-704 to 76-724 without further approval of the Board of Education.
I guess I'll just, do we, do we have a map? So, Dr. Turnquist, it's staff's recommendation that these are the properties that we look at that would best suit a layout and we've, I assume, looked at what the best layout would be.
Correct, right, the rectangular shape of the area, contiguous areas is best suited to the construction of any facilities as well as athletic fields, it also provides best access from Ida and from 156th without a tremendous amount of access through residential areas and the staff feels that aesthetically speaking it will provide a stellar facility with a wonderful view coming north on 156th and coming from the east on Ida Street.
And the acres that are being recommended are adequate for the size of the facility that we're looking at?
They are, they total, those acres total 59.62 acres and by comparison Northwest High School is 61.4 and Burke High School is 57.4.
Yeah, very comparable to what we already have. Well, I can just share with the Board that I've had a tremendous amount of feedback from folks in my sub-district that are very excited about this potential location and are just excited about the potential for a future high school in the area, so I just want to share that with the Board. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Turnquist? Hearing none.
I move that the staff be authorized to set the date, time, location for and to conduct a public hearing pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statutes 79-1096 regarding OPS's proposed acquisition of the property set forth in the agenda item before us. Staff shall not be authorized to file any petition allowed under Nebraska Revised Statutes 76-704 to 76-724 without further approval from the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mrs. Fay to move that staff be authorized to set the date, time, location for and to conduct a public hearing pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 79-1096 regarding OPS's proposed acquisition of the properties set forth in the agenda item before us. Staff shall not be authorized to file any petition allowed under Nebraska Revised Statute 76-704 to 76-724 without further approval of the Board of Education. Is there any further conversation? Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, could legal counsel, just for the benefit of the public, explain that last sentence, staff shall not be authorized to file any petition allowed under, et cetera.
The statutory reference basically is for them in a domain proceeding, so the staff would have to, before they officially implement eminent domain, would have to come back in front of the Board of Education for affirmative vote for the education to proceed with eminent domain proceedings.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries, moving on to J2F, Acquisition of Property for Potential High School Site. Dr. Turnquist.
Thank you, Mrs. Gauding. Staff recommends the approval of an agreement with the land company to negotiate with the following property owners for the purchase of their properties, 6904 North 156th, Lot 2 Sugar's Place, approx, excuse me, 7002 North 156th. The agreement provides for a commission of 2.5% of the gross purchase price of each unlisted property purchased by the district pursuant to a purchase agreement negotiated by the land company. Commissions would be paid by the district to the land company at the closing of each purchase with a maximum commission of $55,000 in the aggregate for all unlisted properties acquired through their services. There would be no commission paid by the district on properties purchased by the district that are listed for sale.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Turnquist? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Scanlon.
Was this agreement with the land company, was it competitively bid?
Yes, it was competitively quoted. All the other quotes were, I believe, 3% and with no cap.
Any other questions? Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board engage the land company to serve as buyer's agent for the properties described and for the terms set forth in the contract before the Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Vargas for the Board to engage the land company to serve as buyer's agent for the properties described and for the items set forth in the contract before the Board. Is there any other conversation, questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries, there are no receipt of reports, I do want to thank Mr. Warnakee for being here and apologize for running out of time and needing to move you to the next Board meeting, so we'll make sure you get to be first on the list.
All right, dang, I wanted to break the, break the good, bad news to him, she beat me to the punch. I move that the Board of Education go in a closed session for the protection of the public, of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel and Connie Kanoki, negotiations pending litigation and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Williams and second by Ms. America. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries, let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel and Connie Kanoki, negotiations pending litigation and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 10:30. Look, the record reflects that the board went into closed session at 10:30.